We do not need any. So we do not need any authorization to.
Motion to adjourn now.
Second.
Closed session.
Oh. I move that the school board convene a closed session pursuant to section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A seven of the Code of Virginia to consult with legal counsel, inherit briefings by staff members pertaining to probable litigation concerning a certificate of take filed on April sixteen twenty twenty four in the Circuit Court of the County of Stafford for the acquisition of Rude and various easement of tax met number forty four dash sixty one A for high school six, where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the school board.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? We are closed.
Kristi, went to section two point two dash thirty seven twelve of the Code of Virginia. I move that the closed session held on September twenty four twenty twenty four be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of Stafford County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business, excuse me, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were held discussed or considered by the board.
Second. Dr. Chase?
Agreed.
Ms. Guy?
Agree.
Ms. Halsted?
Agree.
Ms. Healy?
Agree.
Ms. Randall?
Agree.
Ms. Sigmund?
Agree.
And Dr. Warner?
Agree.
Then I'm sure the motion passes. Are there any actions coming up close session?
We have a, a big motion.
Mm-hmm.
May I move that the school board approves the agreement after certificate on the terms and conditions as discussed during the closed meeting. The school board also authorizes the school board chair or vice chair in the absence of the board chair to sign all documents associated with the appointment in the agreement.
Second. All in favor? Do we need to pull the board on this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item four point zero one, school board legislative priorities for the twenty twenty five Virginia General Assembly.
Did I see somewhere we did not get the SBA until October one?
That's exactly right. Okay. So I contacted them and they said to expect it October one-ish.
It usually comes pretty late sometimes.
Correct. So it will be available for the October tenth order.
Okay.
But I did see that they did not, didn't, we see that there was not going to be very many things to review this year. It was like seven. It was like very.
Yes. Also, October one is right around.
Turn down.
Next week.
But it sounds far away, but it's like tomorrow.
It's Tuesday. It's a week from today.
So I can add it once we have it at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So this is just down there. So this is just an update from the work session and we just had the governance meeting. So on page one under that third paragraph, there will be some updates to the twenty twenty three date, just to kind of bring it current to this year. At the work session, the board did ask about the one that is three pages from the back, the grades four through six class size. The clarification has been made. Dr. Chase said we're talking about sixth grade specialist only.
Right.
So the clarification has been made since the work session earlier in the month. So that is the new one added. The last one is a kind of a reprise from last year that almost passed but didn't. So this has been recast a little bit to make it more palatable, I believe, to some of the members who cast the same votes. So more discussions will be had with Senator Durant, who is looking for a member of the other party to sponsor the house side of this. So.
So this is just changing the school construction to, to frame it as student safety?
It, it, it isn't just that, but it also took, took off the alternative education references as well. And so it purely leaves it up to the judge to give expanded information on information that we already get. So we already get disposition of the reportables.
You're talking about something. I was talking about this student safety whole construction, but to school construction.
Oh, the school construction. That last month there was the desire I did hear to, to cast it as Stafford County, adding on Stafford County to the list.
Okay. For the one percent.
For the, for the one percent.
But that's what failed last year.
Uh, no. What, what failed was making it open to everybody in the state.
Okay. So now we're dealing with a much more specific list.
Which is, which is how we started off last year, but then our proposal got wrapped up into the larger proposal. And it was the bigger picture for everybody that was vetoed by the government.
But it still passed, yeah, both houses.
It passed both houses, but it was vetoed ultimately. So it's not wrong.
Any discussion?
Um, go, go, if you could finish Lisa, you're a secretary.
Oh, so you said this was reworked to be the last one on the, on the court. Right. To, to, to allow at the, at the court's discretion additional information that may be needed in order to support students and to know what their conditions are. Because right now it is very difficult to make any types of decisions or to know how to support students when we only know deferred. Deferred almost always comes with conditions. That's why it's been deferred. And if we know that this student isn't supposed to get in trouble or this student is supposed to do this, then when that student comes back to school, our schools can be in a position to help that student a little bit better than to see them go get back in trouble again and we not be able to help, you know? Because we do have the return to school conferences and we do meet with the families, but right now it's information based on, okay, this is what we got. Deferred. They don't have to tell us and that's fine, but sometimes it's in our best interest to know.
Yeah. The only problem with that, which because a couple of delegates had reached out to me when this first came up and their pushback, although they absolutely get the point, right, of how this is helpful, but certain kids get certain labels that actually don't deserve it for just making a mistake or, you know, that sent them to the system, but maybe they're not, you just get afraid of like attaching that to a kid and then them getting their reputation and getting adversely affected by the reputation versus what they're doing. And that's, I mean, it happens.
So but wouldn't that information be considered confidential anyway and only be open to like the principal and, and I'm a misunderstanding what you're saying, but.
No one else gets the, the deferred information but us. Um, so, I mean, or, 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 or we could stay in the vacuum that we're in now, which is.
Yeah, I, I get.
Not, and I hear what you're implying, saying.
I do, I do hear what you're saying, but at the same time, this kid already has a label and, and perhaps there aren't any conditions that we, that we should be concerned about or things that we can help.
So.
But there are times when you don't know what you don't know.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree. I, I can see what they're saying, but I absolutely, I mean, I'd support it, but I understand what you're saying.
And the way that this has been, it was, it was reworked last year anyway, was to leave it at the discretion of the court. So the judge can make a decision.
So can I ask a question about? So this is for, just for students that essentially transfer in here, it would come with their records or is it?
No, 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 because that was already.
Okay. Cause I know there were two that were little.
Yeah, yeah. They're kind of similar, but not, but, but maybe not the same. This is for students who have reportable criminal.
So even if a Stafford County student is in Stafford County trouble with Stafford County sheriffs, we may not know. If it doesn't happen in conjunction with.
It has to be a reportable. So there is a list of offenses in the statute that we're supposed to get notice of.
But there's others that are not.
Sometimes, yeah. Sometimes there's a disconnect in getting the final dispositions. We just have to rely upon the courts to send it when they send it because we don't always know when the court dates are and court dates can be continued. We don't get any of that information. All we get is the charge and then we get most of the time a disposition. And the disposition will tell you three things. Convicted, not convicted, or deferred. It's the deferred ones that are, what do we do with that? What does that mean? Um, so we don't know what it means. The other two are pretty cut and dry.
Right. And it's over at that point, right?
Deferred means that at some point the child typically within twelve months will have a court date back in a court and sometimes they'll dismiss the charge.
But convicted, not convicted, at least.
That's pretty cut and dry.
It's done.
We don't have any questions about that. Questions about deferred.
Different kind of data. I mean, how is that data handled once it comes to us if it's deferred?
My office gets it.
Okay. So and then, then it's your discretion to deal with the, the principle, the principle and decide what further. That was my question. You said deferred comes with, oftentimes comes with conditions.
I know, I, I know it comes with conditions.
It does come with.
It absolutely does, but we don't.
You're just not told what those conditions are.
And that's what we're seeing really here.
And there are some, some cases depending upon what the underlying charges, we don't even need to know, we don't even need to know the conditions. Sometimes it is in our best interest to know the conditions.
Could you, I don't know if it's appropriate, but could you give us an example of a condition that you wish we would have known that would have made a difference for us?
I will tell you what, what, I mean, I will give you a good example that actually worked out in the favor of the kid because we had a willing therapist who was getting, willing to give more general type of information. So there was a student with a sexual assault charge and it came back with deferred. In this particular case, we talked to the mom and the mom said, Dad, my student has to, has to undergo an assessment. In this case, the student underwent the assessment, but couldn't get what were the results. So are we supposed to put this student back in the two thousand student high school or what do we do? And so we just kind of twiddled the thumbs. I ended up talking to the probation officer who said, I think the student is fine to go back to school. So, but I think I can get the therapist to talk to you generally enough without disclosing a lot of information. The information that was disclosed, actually the story didn't even match with what the uncharged was. And the therapist did the assessment and said, the student is absolutely one hundred percent fine and I'm willing to put that in writing to you. Because sometimes there is a disconnect between the initial charge and what actually happens during the trial and other facts come out. And they didn't match. So that's why it was deferred because the judge felt the student still needed to undergo the assessment before the judge agreed to put a not guilty or, or not convicted. In this case, at the end of the deferral period, the charges were dropped. But before that, we did let the student go back to the base school and the student was. But that's where it can help a student because in that case with that underlying charge, we're most likely not going to put the student back in the two thousand student high school. You know, if this process had been in place, I wouldn't have had to go through all of those initial changes and that's me who's pursuing it. If, if it weren't me, I, I mean, I didn't have to do anything. I could have just said, stay with your alternative school. But I just kind of thought, why not? You know, so anyway. That's an instance where it, it helped.
Helps me understand.
It, it actually helped in this case.
This student had a better outcome.
The student had a better outcome.
Than knowing the information, than us not knowing the information, whether we're going to err on the side of safety.
You have to err on the side of safety.
So to me, that's the big issue here, which is our ability, that's the number one priority here is the safety of all students. And I don't know, you know, we can talk about a hundred incidents that might be a one-off that led to a bad decision or whatever. But I think at the end of the day, we still have the obligation to make sure that it is a one-off. And if we're being held, I mean, I would all, at all times err on the side of caution. And how is that there?
Exactly. And then there are times when, when we've had meetings like we had one over the summer about a student who was going back to the base school. But it was a meeting with the high school executive director, the base school, the social worker, the Phoenix center, the Phoenix center counselor and me and we all talked and put, and put structures in place to make sure the student was successful. So, but when you don't have information, you can't do any of that. You can't do any of that when you don't have the data or the information. You just sit there. So the choices are in some cases for the student to languish in a computer base at home or at the Phoenix center or go back to the base school.
And we have, we can't take like the mother's anecdotal facts like.
Oh, I'm going to need something a little bit more, something different than that.
Well, I'm right. That's what I'm saying.
My children's birthday, they never did anything wrong.
We don't believe that.
The one who doesn't put all the rules on.
I know, right?
But you know, but there are times when the parent is able, sometimes the parents don't have it. They, they, they lost it, they misplaced it or they don't have it. Who knows? You know, and I'm not a blame the parent. Um, but sometimes if the parent has it, the parent has given us the conditions and the conditions were, were basically go to school. And to see that, it's like, oh, okay, you get to go to school. But we don't know what we don't know. We don't know what's, what is in the documentation. So it's not like. We have these nefarious, you know, um, but, but since this would be a state law, I do understand the concerns, you know? There are, you know, there, there, there could be some places who are not using it in a positive manner.
But we have a chain of custody for that information that keeps it out of the kid's general records so that anybody looking at his file wouldn't necessarily.
It doesn't even.
And I say his, but.
It doesn't even go over.
I'm just saying.
It, it doesn't even go to the student's records. It stays in our records, like, like the legal records. It doesn't even get to the state.
Clarification more also, just something more you said yesterday, just, yesterday, just now. So it is staff, if it's a Stafford kid to the Stafford schools, but it's also anyone coming into Stafford schools from external, that's what this applies to, like external.
No, this is a state law.
Right. But I'm saying like it would apply everyone. So if somebody moved here from Virginia Beach, they would legally have to provide us with any information on that child that would. So. See, I just, I just, never mind.
Depends upon when it happened. So a student who, so I don't know. I'm just going to make up an example. Student could have been in ninth grade. A student could have been in Inter Virginia Beach. A student is transferring to us in twelfth grade. We, we may not know what happened with, back in ninth grade.
Okay.
So, or if they're coming out of there, this law wasn't, wouldn't apply.
So, all right. So this, so.
This is all moving forward stuff. I just think about like some families.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying though. Moving forward, we'd be looking like if someone's coming to us, I mean, nine to twelfth grade is a big differential, but this would apply to anyone coming into our school system currently.
I guess the issue is we have seen cases where families are trying.
This is coming from the court. So this is when one of our students does something.
Right. Right. So that's what I'm saying. Like Stafford to Stafford, right? That's one thing. I'm understanding that, but that's also.
But this will be a state law. So if the, so if the adjudication were, for instance, in Prince William County and the student is enrolled in Stafford now, then theoretically Stafford is supposed to get the disposition.
That's what I want to know.
What actually happens sometimes is the court doesn't know the student has moved, so Prince William will get it, but Prince William sends it to us. And we now send things and we will look for and sometimes we have to contact the court and what the student is carrying more. So we'll check with surrounding school divisions as, you know, a measure of due diligence.
Right.
Um, and sometimes we, we can't find the student. So if you can't find them, you can't send the notice, but we do keep in the file that we checked with Prince William, we checked with Fairbanks, we checked with Foster. We call the court back and say, this student doesn't live here anymore. So who should get this? Sometimes they don't know.
Okay.
But we can only do what we can do. And sometimes we can follow the chains with the records request.
But I think what Melissa was asking was like, this, this information isn't triggered from a kid just moving to communities. This is, that's what, right? This is triggered from when the kid does.
When we get notification of reportable criminal charges.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Good.
Yeah. And sometimes that can come from another school division, but most of the time it happens with Stafford students.
Yeah.
We're mostly talking ninety-nine percent of the time about a Stafford student.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah.
All right. It's, all right, sorry.
That's.
Does anyone have anything else on this topic? Okay. Moving on to court point zero two, high school redistricting for the twenty twenty six, twenty seven school year.
All right.
Mr. White?
Give your name.
We do only have about twenty or so minutes for presentation, so we're going to kind of keep questions brief. And of course, Mr. White is so accommodating to all of us with our follow-ups. So, but we do want to get this out so the public can review and comment. And our next work session is next week. For redistricting, town hall is next Tuesday. Correct?
Yes, October first.
Stafford, huh?
All right. So tonight's objectives, I'm going to go over what we've heard from the community. We're going to look at the latest boundary scenarios. We're also, if necessary, take a look at the initials and we'll talk about next steps with feedback. All right. Of course, our redistricting policy is policy fourteen oh three and these are the factors that we use when we develop any scenario. All right. So what we've heard, these are some common threads gathered from emails, telephone calls, feedback forms from parents. Keep students at, uh, keep students at their closest schools. Consider road safety was something that came up, traffic and student drivers. Look at feeder pattern alignment, largely middle, high school. And of course we communicated, that's really tough given our crowding situation and the number of schools we have, but we have communicated that. Uh, consider planning in splits. Consider North Stafford High School space limitations. There's a thought that North Stafford has smaller hallways, their portion is crowded as much. We've sort of heard that from some of the people. Uh, there's been a desire for less buses on roads, concerns about traffic and shorter bus rides. Some people have expressed that have juniors considering grant, non-grant, uh, grant providing opportunities for non seniors, i.e. juniors and sophomores. Uh, also there was the thought of, look at natural barriers, i.e. major roads like Highway seventeen, Route one, major sort of roads, six ten as the boundary. Yes. And limit future boundary changes. They don't think this is fun. We don't want to do this every two years.
Welcome to our world. Time to step building houses and moving here, okay? Solution for that.
It looks like be prepared to open another high school or a small vocational high school in twenty thirty two. That was a suggestion we were looking to make. So they're looking at the data and then seeing where we need schools. Yep. And last comment, make each school a true community where all students can succeed. That was their request. All right. So now that we've kind of gone over what we've heard, let's talk about some of the new scenario D's based on input received from the board, the community. Here's where we are. On the left, we have current boundaries. On the right, we have scenario D. And you can sort of see in the map where Colonial Forge Boundary extends north and it also extends east. Brookpoint loses its southern portion of its boundary to Stafford. You can see what's going on with high school six in this scenario. And now let's take a look at some data behind that. So scenario D, uh, it's a great scenario. Gives us three years out. There's no significant crowding at all. Way out into the future, assuming the absolute worst case scenario, everything we know of builds, you know, on time and all that in our projection. This is what it would look like. So essentially we have schools becoming crowded, which is not a surprise because we know that we're anticipating the need for a new high school in twenty thirty three. So it's not a surprise that there's going to be crowding in twenty thirty two. Terms of looking at free and reduced lunch before, after, you can see sort of the differences, the shifts in demographics.
What's the county average?
County average free and reduced lunch is forty seven percent.
Okay.
And so you can sort of see subtle differences between each school. All right. So let's move now to scenario E. All right. So scenario E, you see that North Stafford Boundary, that sort of southern portion there remains at North Stafford. We see because that happened, Colonial Forge's Boundary extends further east. Brookpoint stays about the same and its southern part of the boundary has its reassigned to Stafford. High School Six has minor tweaks. We add two planning units to High School Six. Uh, those planning units are relatively close to High School Six and from a transportation perspective, we heard that input from communities, school board members. Sounds like a great idea.
Can I ask, sorry, I don't know. So the, the Colonial Forge Boundary that's on the far side of Route one, do they end up having to get on Route one to get to Brookpoint or are they able to get to Brookpoint without getting on Route one?
A lot of them will have to because.
Yeah, I'm assuming they'll have to.
So to get.
You get the Colonial Forge.
Right, right. That's what I meant. So, so to get, like if they were going to, but if they, if they stayed at Brookpoint, would they still be getting on Route one to get to Brookpoint?
Or do they use that bridge?
Some of that area, they have to get, they have to get on Route one because of where they are. They're in that split section. So they have to come out anyway, get on Route one.
That's what I just.
Yeah, to go along and around.
Yeah, no, they do. They do. Cause my kid rode that bus. Cause my, that's my mother's house. So.
Yeah.
We just spent today.
So it's kind of six of one, half dozen the other way they go to.
Make a left, make a right.
Whether they go to.
Make a left, yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Except they have to go through that interchange to get to Forge, which takes a lot of time with all those.
I thought you were asking because we don't like kids crossing Route one to go to their school.
Yeah. I mean, basically we just assume they not, but if they have to, if they, if they're going to have to be on Route one and turn right or left either way, maybe it's not such a, yeah, it's not a big deal.
Can we get the timing, you know, of a bus? Not, not how many miles exactly, but, you know, a projected timing of that. Because I know when I go home through that little interchange, no matter what time of day it is, it takes extra time to get through the ninety-five, you know, interchange to, which they'd have to do to go up to Forge.
Okay. I can get that.
Of course, it can't be any worse than Stepford Lakes going up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Was there any other questions?
I have a question and not, I guess I'll, you know, have to look at the details, but that little piece of, um,
On the.
That, no, I'm looking at the green.
Yeah.
In, in, in north. It seems like that piece.
Oh, I see.
Much closer to north than it would be to Brook. So I'd like to get the time of, to get to one school versus the other because that, that looks like a reach.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
It does look like it.
Yeah.
And, and then, and also, you know, the little Mountain View piece, it's not as far from Mountain View, but I, I don't know if it, maybe this is in for balancing numbers or something, but that seems like we're just making little finger.
Yes.
Cokes.
But some of that final.
For those, those two pieces.
Was feeder pattern too, right? Was, if, and I might have heard it wrong, but it was, these are, these are a group of kids that are already going to Dixon or something, right?
Oh, not Dixon. No, that's, that's not.
Oh, Shirley High, sorry. Sorry. So that's why keeping them together at that point, because the feeder patterns are awkward.
They are awkward and quite honestly, that's a, that is a part of it, but a bigger part is having balanced enrollment. One of the issues that we have with Mountain View is because Mountain View loses some of its attendance boundary below seventeen to have more efficient, shorter rides to high school six for those kids and shorter rides for kids in Mountain View. That takes away a significant student body. And so because they're losing some students, they have to gain some students.
Yes.
And looking at that western edge where Mountain View, Colonial Forge and North Stafford meet, that is the, the natural, normal choice. Someone in that area is going to have to go to Mountain View in order to add more students. Because silly example, we wouldn't want to pull kids further away because then we would be creating islands. So if we don't want to create islands, we have to go along that edge to increase Mountain View's numbers to a respectable number, you know, based on how, what you think.
And is it, is some of it just the population density in those, those little, like up there that we're, Ms. Healy, that green area up there, is that a really high? that green area up there, is that a really high density population?
High density.
It's half of a high density.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be helpful if we have the numbers to go with them too, same thing with the little green on the other, for the other side.
They're in the detailed.
Oh, they're in this?
Mm-hmm.
They're in there.
Well, are they for specific? Well, I, like you're talking about this section here.
Yeah.
So it's three twenty six, three twenty five.
Oh, wow.
Well, that's the planning unit number, a lot of this.
Oh, that's the planning unit.
That's all right, that, that planning unit number can be used, so you can identify how many students are in that planning unit, and that information is on our website, and of course, I can send that information to you.
To see it.
So you can see it also, so no problem.
But we need to remember that those numbers will change, people don't stay in high school forever.
Oh, that's correct, yeah, they don't.
Even now, it would be nice.
All right, so let's look at some of the background data on scenario E.
So I wanna, if I may too, I mean, it's, I don't know if it's really helpful or more confusing for people, and the percentages are one thing, I think, but the student total population piece, for people to actually see what that number's breakdown is, that's a very, it presents almost a very different picture than just the percentage, because for some folks, the percentage is a little bit more vague. But like, when, when we were looking at them, to see like twenty-three hundred students or whatever, twenty-five hundred students, like, that's a hundred and whatever percent, but it's much more shocking to see what number, what the definitive number of bodies would be.
And it's different. And to understand that Forge being our biggest high school, North Stafford being our smallest high school, you know, what, what can be a common, uh, uh, a full north doesn't look like a full Forge.
North is not our smallest in terms of square footage.
No, seats.
Seats, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but the, it should be the same regardless of how many students, if it's a percentage of.
Right, but what I'm saying is that if you're looking at a, a hundred and eight percent capacity at North with their narrow hallways, um, than a hundred and two at Forge, you're, it's a little more troublesome at North to be that high than Forge to be that high.
Right, but when you actually see what that translates into number-wise, right, like.
That does make sense to me. It does.
Two thousand students.
But why is not the capacity set based on the.
Like, what we could do at eighteen hundred students. That seems, it's, 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 it's based on.
It is.
It's easier for people to understand.
The number of kids in classrooms, but it's not based on how many.
Okay, so it's not based on the design then, so maybe that's our problem, and how we calculate the capacity. Because a hundred and five should be a hundred and five, no matter where you are. No, but maybe, maybe the capacity should be smaller where they have the smaller.
And it is, so.
It is smaller, at, um, at North Stafford, it's what, two thousand twenty-five?
Yes.
Or nineteen twenty-five?
No, it's, uh, it's two thousand.
Two thousand twenty-five, I think.
And then Forge is two thousand seventy-five, so, but when you still look at the hallways of North Stafford versus the hallways at Forge, North Stafford full is incredibly uncomfortable compared to.
Hallways aren't used to calculate the design capacity, Ms. Healy, it's truly the number of seats that are in all your classrooms combined.
Maybe we ought to take the hallways into consideration in a case like this, if we have a school that has significantly smaller hallways, and that should be part of the capacity, uh, cause, you know.
So we don't actually adjust the design capacity, I know what you're saying, but we're taking it into a consideration here.
But the only one left is the small. So maybe we ought to look at how we calculate the capacity.
Brook has slightly smaller hallways too, doesn't it, or does it, no, I don't know.
They're not, really, not really, um, I mean, I would say, no, absolutely, no, I wouldn't say, yeah.
How do we count right now, design capacity, or?
Design, middle school and high school is design capacity.
Okay.
Programs only, I don't know.
But I think we should be considering the hallways, I mean, that's a point, but a, if you're a percentage of a capacity, it should be the same, no matter what school you're at, and, and maybe we need to change our calculation to say it's a smaller number where we don't have the, the same size hallways.
It is, because we say, like, if you say, we're gonna put nineteen hundred students at North Stafford, and they have a seat capacity of two thousand twenty-five, then you use that to factor your percent. And if you say, I'm gonna put nineteen hundred students at Forge, and they have a seating capacity at two thousand seventy-five, then that will, that will trigger their.
So I think I get what she's saying, is that we're basically changing the denominator without changing the numerator.
Yeah.
As you could have three hundred free and reduced lunch, or ESOL, or special education students in a population, and three hundred of a thousand is three hundred of eighty-one.
Powered amount.
Our percentage goes up, even though our caseload hasn't changed, so that's just something we'll have to be aware of moving forward.
Because if we can't use our numbers, if we're saying we're X percent over capacity, it should be the same formula across.
It is, it's just their, their hundred percent feels a little bit tighter as you transition through the hallways versus a Colonial Forge, Mountain View, Stafford's hundred percent transitioning through hallways, so.
It's also a matter.
You can get all the kids in there at one time, and they're in their classrooms, it's just during the transition period, so.
Well, but, but if you can't get them through the transition, then, then the formula, the formula might be wrong, that's all.
The newer designs have slightly wider.
It did, then it lasts a long time.
But you're also talking about stress on the building too, and a building like North Stafford now.
This is close to this conversation.
It's like a hardwood, right, like, if we can reduce that number substantially down more, that's less stress on that building, that building's lifespan, I'm not saying.
That's the hardwood rep.
Yes.
I know, well, speaking from experience, I'm just saying, that's what I was told in the beginning, so.
Well, we have a few minutes left, so we'll want Lionel to finish up.
To finish.
Okay, so, uh, just looking at the numbers here, in twenty twenty-nine, three years after the boundary change, we're in great shape. Twenty thirty-two, same thing, we're gonna have about three schools crowded, it's gonna happen in every scenario, because we're growing.
Right.
So they can't escape that, there's no scenario that will fix that, it's just who's gonna be crowded is essentially what it boils down to, and how much will they be crowded? So looking at twenty thirty-two in scenario E, we can see, uh, Brookpoint is, is that, is projected to be at a hundred and six percent, and again, that's a projection in ten years into the future. Colonial Forge at a hundred and three, High School six is gonna be pretty much at capacity. Looking at free and reduced lunch differences, because of the planning units involved in the move, looks like free and reduced lunch percentage went down three percentage points for North Stafford. Conversely, there was a shift in Brookpoint, so whenever we make shifts, we see it happen elsewhere, it's not, that it just happens in a vacuum. So everybody, all these planning units are connected to each other, and all these shifts impact someone else at some level. All right, so next, we have scenario F, and in scenario F, that same, uh, area in the northern portion of the county that's in North Stafford is reassigned to Brookpoint, we see that Colonial, North Stafford's southern, uh, attendance, those, uh, planning units remain at North Stafford, Colonial Forge goes east, and you see in this scenario that Colonial Forge loses its western portion of its boundary. One of the concerns, uh, that came up was, hey, can we get Mountain View a little more full? So there's.
Yes, take them off.
There's, there's different ways to do it, this is one way to do it, is, uh, I believe this community is, uh, it's, uh, it's Augustine, and then there are other communities north of Augustine on the edge, on the western edge of Colonial Forge's boundaries.
Is that all of Augustine?
Yes, it's the entire Augustine.
And so who suggested that, did the, the Augustine people didn't suggest it, did they? I haven't heard anything from anyone, because these are just coming out.
Oh, no one ever calls and said.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, because Augustine development is where the Colonial Forge land came from, so it's very close to Colonial Forge.
Right, but that also feeds Mountain View Road, it goes directly out to Mountain View Road.
The back.
Right, well, right, but you can come through with a bus.
But the front of it is on Courthouse Road, which is rated for speed.
Right, but, but that, but we're not allowed to split, develop, split communities, right? So it has to be a whole community that's moved, and if you look at the numbers breakdown, vice, the percentage breakdown, then what you find is that in twenty thirty-two, I mean, if, if, if we don't figure out a way to balance out Mountain View, then we might as well just figure out a way to close it.
When is, um, High School seven projected to be online?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
These numbers.
Uh, twenty, yeah.
So when these are all, oh, yeah, and these are full, hypothetically, they're all gonna go down.
Forty-seven.
Twenty percent.
We're presenting the ten-year number, but I would caution about putting too much investment in that ten-year number.
Yeah, like Dr. Chase said, that's everything built out, everything.
Yes, it is kind of the, the full construction of all those neighborhoods out there coming in that ten years, so, it is assuming everything, and every student shows up, um, you know, even this year, we're gonna probably fall a little bit short of our projections, so we're already kind of turning a little bit, I, I would bet a lot of money that we're not gonna hit those full amounts in, in ten years, now, these are projections, and that's our projections that we're gonna look at, and we're gonna work on, Lionel will come out with new projections for that ten-year mark, um, in a month-ish.
But isn't that even more of a reason to.
Decompress North Stafford.
Decompress, well, decompress, but also, like, for a school that's already low on, at its highest production.
Well, this, this, Mountain View's got like eighty-nine, ninety percent, and that's pretty low, I'd rather move students into Mountain View
Right.
and up the front, because we know that in ten years, if we, if the projections go the way they are.
They're still good.
Right.
We, they're still good, but we're still gonna have to deal with, um, overcrowding at Brookpoint.
There is, the, the projections have very little growth in Mountain View, and there's just not a lot of development in that zone.
I don't wanna read it, it's too.
Seven would be scheduled for that, yeah.
Right, it is.
So their numbers are gonna be pretty flat, like, the other areas.
And it can, it can pressure on. May I ask you one thing, though, because, 'cause, 'cause Ms. Halsted said we don't divide neighborhoods, we do sometimes split up neighborhoods, and we can split up neighborhoods, because like Leland Station, there are like three different parts, and some go to, some go to Grafton, and some go to, to Conway, and then Embry Mill is huge, and some go, you know, at various times, so I don't want us to, to, to go.
No, but I thought that was one of, one of the parameters, right, it's try not to, but also, like, as we get into elementary school,
We try not to.
I hope that's something that we correct, like, honestly, as we get into, you know, the elementary school.
I just don't want somebody listening to be like, wait a minute.
We're not, yeah.
Yeah.
But also, Lionel, has transportation weighed in on any of the maps in terms of whether they create, um,
Oh, that was my question.
if, whether any of this creates efficiencies or deficiencies or whatever, because that's a bigger concern?
Yes, I've sent them the maps, and my expectation is that we'll get some feedback to you, maybe in the Friday letter from them.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I really, I really feel like this is all theoretical until we hear from them.
Yeah, 'cause it's gotta be a consideration.
Hundred percent.
Is the High School six, is that with just the three-year classes, is that why it's at seventy-nine?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, but hypothetically, if you added that fourth year, the next year, wouldn't you go up more than ten percent?
Now, let me clarify, so the twenty twenty-six number on this is showing all four.
Of four years?
Yes, all four grades, because we don't quite know right now, you know, we have some idea of the grandfathering, and programs, all that business, I said, let's go with, if we put everyone into school, this just gives you an idea.
But we know we're not gonna have a senior class.
That's correct, so the numbers will shift a little bit.
No matter what. No matter what, we won't have a senior class.
That's correct, so the numbers will shift, that's why, for me, I'm looking more so three years out, because that's gonna give us a better reflection of when everybody's in the building, and really, I also have the number for twenty twenty-seven, it's gonna be similar to twenty twenty-nine, but a little less, moral of the story, three years after the boundary change, everybody's in pretty decent shape, in this particular scenario, if you look at Mountain View, it's gonna be at ninety-four percent, and because there's not a lot of development, which we said earlier, it's, it sort of go, bumps up to ninety-six percent, so it's being utilized, it's not overcrowded in this scenario. Another thing, just in comparing and contrasting, I'll, I'll go back, if you, just look at the, the three schools impacted, so Brookpoint's at a hundred and two, Colonial Forge is at a hundred and four, and High School six at a one oh one, so let's look at E. We go one oh six, one oh three, one oh one, so in terms of just distribution of students, they're very subtle, but.
That's like two hundred students in that three years, each school, that's, that's.
And you're, that's big.
And then scenario D, we have North Stafford at one oh eight, one oh four, one oh two, and one hundred, so just depending on which students are shifted.
But Mountain View stays low in the eighty-eight.
That's correct, so in this scenario, we would never let it get to twenty thirty-two with Mountain View at fifteen percent of its capacity open, so we would end up redistricting.
So we would be doing another redistricting.
At that time, which we could do now and avoid having to do that then.
That is correct.
True.
Um, oh, this is D, never mind, I thought sixty-one, yeah, I thought like fifty-one percent was ahead, but that's not right.
Okay, we're gonna let him finish. Just a couple minutes. Okay. I'd like to give us a break between.
Yeah.
Here it is there.
All right, so that's it for the new scenarios.
Can I just ask a quick question, what happens, do students who move into, um, for example, High School six as seniors? Do they go to High School six?
No.
No.
They don't.
They come to Forge?
They go to wherever.
Wherever they're from.
Wherever they're, they're.
So they'll stay at Stafford, or they'll stay at Forge, somewhere.
Okay, so, yeah.
But that would be different if they take the specialty center at High School six, right? I mean, we're not, not, because.
No.
We won't, we won't, I said that, just leave that part out, and then, pretend like there was a communication issue right there, like the mic, just whatever.
Okay, so.
Go ahead.
Really quick house cleaning for the folks that may be watching us at home, uh, here's our community engagement. October first, we have community meeting number two at Stafford High School, seven P M. Don't forget October thirty, community meeting number three at Mountain View High School, that one's at six P M. And we have our school board information public hearing on November twelfth, that's gonna be at the Bandy complex here, seven P M, and of course, there'll be school board action on December tenth, uh, here at seven P M. And of course, the boundaries take effect in August twenty twenty-six, just wanna make that clear. And I've done my public service announcement.
So whenever, whenever we do this, can we make sure that, like, people who have freshmen starting next year, or people who have freshmen this year, understand that their children are gonna be moved in twenty-six, right? So they know.
But if they're in a specialty center, they won't be moved.
Sure, but, but there will be plenty who do get moved, and it would be good for them to know that sooner.
Yeah.
And we're, we're sending notification, anybody that's in a zone, in any of the scenarios that's been identified potentially be redistricted, whether they are in kindergarten today, or twelfth grade technically, we're sending notifications to those families for all grade levels.
And, like, um, Ms. Halsted asked you, if transportation has been involved in looking at this to say, you guys are crazy if you think this is gonna work, I'd like to get that input as well. But also, have we discussed these with the high school principals? Just because they're very, um, in the know about their communities, maybe community needs, or anything like that, have these been shared with them as well?
Uh, boy.
It's certainly been shared.
Yeah, not directly.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I would like to, just to hear, yeah, just to hear.
Get some feedback from them. Okay.
Thank you.
Why are we meeting at seven, I'm just, I know it is, I'm just curious, why the other ones are at six, or that's at seven?
Because of National NIO.
National NIO.
Yeah, National.
What time is National?
If you get from the.
Five to seven?
We can give you much time to get North Stafford down to South Stafford.
So it gives people time to go there for a little bit.
But that's, but the families, I guess, is.
Seven is totally better in some ways for.
For South Stafford.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Starts right on now.
It's on fifteen now.
Yeah.
So now it's not.
All right, so, nine minutes, and then we will be in the chambers at our middle table.
Okay, all right, so.
So, listen, Sophia's in this new, this tournament, I was up to speak with her, she's in this new, well, her goalie.